Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for the city of Bartlett. Today is August 1st and the time is 7:00 PM, so we'll go ahead and get started. If you would, stand, join me in prayer, and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for the rain that you've given us, Lord. I pray for those in Kentucky who've received more rain than they needed, God. I pray that you'd watch over and protect them and allow them to find those that they haven't been able to account for. God, I pray that you play a special hedge of protection around those who place themselves in harm's way for our benefit, and I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business tonight is approval of the amendments from the July 5th meeting. Do I have any motions?
Make a motion.
I'll say it.
Thank you. Melissa?
Casper Briggs?
Yes.
Jake Hoffman?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
Mandy Young.
All right, thank you. Motion passes. Next item of business is the Joyce's Garden Plan Development. Someone from staff would introduce that item.
The Joyce's Garden Plan Development is a continued item from last month's Planning Commission meeting in order to give the applicant additional time to provide detention areas within the development plans. Mr. David Bray with the Bray Firm is here tonight requesting approval for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen for the Joyce's Garden Plan Development. This property is located at 6778 Old Brownsville Road, which is south of the Rockyford Place Plan Development and west of the Rockyford Subdivision within the RS-15 Residential Single-Family Zoning District, and it is 27.1 acres. The applicant proposes to subdivide the property into a 40-lot residential plan development with three common open space lots, which sizes range from 8,775 square feet to 36,974 square feet. The new Brownsville extension will cut through the middle of the subdivision, and the development will be constructed in two phases. Phase one will be the northern side of New Brownsville, consisting of lots 1 through 27 and Common Open Space Area A. These lots will be regular-sized lots that will conform to the RS-15 Bulk Regulations in terms of size and setback. Phase two will be located on the southern side of the New Brownsville Road extension with lots 28 through 42, including two open space areas. Stormwater detention has been added to Common Open Space Lots A, B, and D. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with conditions as listed in your staff report.
Thank you, Kim. Is there a representative? Please introduce yourself and state your name and address.
David Bray with the Bray Firm, 2950 Stage Plaza North. We've been through the conditions and we're in agreement with them, and happy to answer any questions you guys have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bray. Does anyone have any questions on the board?
Hey, David, real quick, just going through the items here that were listed, you've had another 30 days or so. Did you get all the information that they were requesting as far as the, it looks like some planning profiles were requested, erosion control issues, oh, detention calcs, all that? You got that all through engineering?
The detention calculations, generally the planning profiles will bring those in with the construction plans.
Yep.
But we do have a grading plan in there, an erosion plan in there, and the detention calculations are on there.
Okay, just making sure engineering's got what y'all need? Good, okay, thanks.
All right, I just had a couple of comments or questions, one for the staff. Does it require a special use permit for a plan development?
The plan development itself is a special use permit.
Okay.
And we had a public hearing last month for this, and that's the requirement for the special, the plan development, just like a special use permit would have.
Okay, all right. I just had a couple other questions for David. What would the maximum home, or the maximum home size be here, what we're looking at?
I'll let the, one of the developers' representatives come up here and speak to house sizes, because I'm not sure. Dean, if that is good. You asking for minimum or maximum?
Well, both, I guess. Just interested in hearing both. I know that the requirement is we can't be more than 50% of this green space, but just wondering how big of a house you'd have there?
Well, I don't plan to build on them, so I imagine that'd be up to the builder, but I think we're going to look at a minimum of 1,800 on the smaller ones and 2,100 on the side on the north.
All right. And a couple of questions, maybe back to David there. Didn't appear that the street width was shown on there?
They're all 50-foot, with the exception of the alley.
All right.
It's it.
And then one other-
Your standard street section.
All right, appreciate that. And then one other question. It looked like we had some lot widths that were less than 65 feet and that were abutted to the front of the street. And maybe that'd be a question for staff, is that we allow lots that are less than, have a street length of less than 65 feet?
Oh, okay, those are 65 at the building line. It's just because of the nature of the radial lot lines. That's why those are smaller then.
Okay. And then engineering, do you have any comment on that? Do we allow it to be less than that at the street?
It's not anything that we would, we would currently, that would be a point in common.
All right.
You'd typically see that on a cul-de-sac lot. They're not typically 65 feet wide at the right-of-way. It's 65 at the building line.
Okay.
For cove lots. For cove lots, you can-
For in a cove, okay.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
The 65 is, is the, on a PBOs that you can go at the street width for normal, for normal PD.
Okay.
But these are cove lots, I guess, you guys determine you don't like that, or you do like that, or you're okay with it.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have a comment, one way or the other, whether I like it or not. I just want to make sure that it was acceptable with planning. If it is, then I don't have any issue with it.
I'm just saying that a typical, in a typical subdivision, you can have, you can have the shorter lot widths at coves, as long as, like, he just said, except at the building setback line, you have to meet that requirement.
Okay, that's what you meant, the building line?
Typical residential lot in any subdivision. But for plan development, you know, it's 65 feet is the minimum lot width, but he's applying that same rule to the plan development, that it will be 65 feet at the building line.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from staff?
Yeah, quick question, David.
How'd y'all handle the cemetery there? I'm curious about that. I think, I think there was a comment in there about trying to work out the property lines on the cemetery. Was there any, is it just visible evidence on the cemetery?
It's visible evidence and one deed that's a little sketchy. But as far, from the survey, there's no visible evidence that it encroaches outside of those lines of what's labeled cemetery on there. It's not over into us.
Have you tested it on it or anything?
Not at this, not at this time.
What's the date on that cemetery, do you know? I'm just kind of curious.
That I don't know.
That's telling you the standard cemetery type?
Kevin's probably got some records of it, and I can ask him, but I don't know off the top of my head what the dates are.
How do you, how do you find handling those two lots at Stradler? Is it just going to be a privacy fence type thing and standard stuff?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? All right, motion?
I move we approve with the conditions outlined.
Second.
Second.
Second, thank you. You call the roll.
Casper Briggs?
Yes.
Jake Hoffman?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Motion passes. Next item we have is the tattoo and body piercing establishment. If someone from staff would like to introduce that.
Ms. Selena Alvarado with Hypnotize Ink Artist Collective is requesting Planning Commission approval for a favorable recommendation for a special use permit for the operation of a tattoo and body piercing establishment at 2965 North Germantown Parkway, Suites 129 and 130. This property is in the CH Highway Business Zoning District. According to Article 5, Chart 1 of the Bartlett Zoning Ordinance, a special use permit is required in the CH Highway Business Zoning District to operate a tattoo and body piercing establishment. The surrounding uses include, to this, to this proposed development are, is a car dealership, a retail shop or shops, hotel, offices, restaurants, and automobile gas stations with convenience stores. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend that you guys provide a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen with the conditions within this staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Is there a representative for the owner here? Please state your name and your address for the record.
Hello, my name is Selena Alvarado, and I'm at 711 Cedar Brake Drive.
All right. Have you read all the conditions in the report?
Yes, I have.
Are you, are you in agreement with those conditions?
I am, yes.
All right. Do you have any comments or anything you'd like to share?
Um, yes, I actually have a lot of documentation just to show you guys that I've been fully operational with Hypnotize Ink for two years. I'm the owner. And I also have documentation showing that we travel and do tattoo conventions considerably. We also are set apart from everyone else because we mainly focus on not just artwork, actual artwork, but we don't do any distasteful tattoos at all. Outside of that, we focus on doing tattoos for, like, women and men who have had cancer, who have went through chemotherapy. We actually do eyebrows, hair, like, to replace hairlines and reconstructive, well, nipples, you know, we tattoo nipples and stuff like that. So that's something that I know for a fact we would be able to provide that no other tattoo shop is able to.
Okay, thank you. If you would have a seat for a minute for a moment, and we may call you back up. I just want to open the floor, and for anyone who wants to speak for this item. Is there anyone that wants to speak against this item? All right. Thank you. I have a note here that there may be some letters for this item that we want to read into the-
We did not.
Okay, no letters, okay. All right, thank you. All right. Does anyone on the board have any comments or questions?
I do have a question. Is all you're going to be doing is tattoos and/or body piercings? There, once upon a time, we had another person that was going to have a cigar bar that turned into liquor by the drink and live band, and I just want to understand what we're, what you're asking us to approve.
Oh, yes, that's all. It's just going to be tattoos and body piercings outside of the cosmetic work I mentioned earlier.
Okay, thank you.
I also do, if you guys would like to see, I have clients who are Bartlett residents, and I had them sign petitions. I don't know if you guys would like to see those.
Oh, you can provide that to the staff, and they can forward it to us.
There you are.
Thank you.
They're complete with addresses.
Yep. All right.
One quick question. Can you give me an idea of your hours of operation?
So, as far as the building is concerned, if they close at a certain time, we would be going with that. But we typically, as we're running right now, are 5:00 PM until whenever, because the studios that we're renting out don't have a time limit. However, if they were to ask, you know, we would need you guys out by 1:00 AM, then we would just open earlier to be sure that we're out by that time.
So you're not open during the general day then?
Not typically, but we do, as far as, like, the Health Department is concerned, we do open up and set up meetings to do all the things that we need to do as far as inspection. And I also have proof of our health permits for the establishment for both the tattoo and piercings that we've maintained for the last two years, and also the, I have one, one receipt of, you know, our perfect score that we've maintained from the Health Department.
Where are you currently located?
So I'm currently located in a suite in Cordova.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So are you closing that business and coming here?
Yes, I would prefer to, yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I do have a question for staff. Is a special use permit conditional based on these conditions that we, that we have here? I mean, I, who enforces that? Is it code enforcement?
I mean, the approval is, would include the conditions in the staff report and whatever conditions you would want to place there. Now, if there is a problem, it's going to be treated like any other business, you know, police, code enforcement, that sort of thing. That's who enforces.
Okay. All right, I guess I would just want to add one additional condition, or make a recommendation here to add one additional condition, that, that they abide by all the State Department of Health standards and the standards laid out by the Tennessee Code, which is, I would just want to add that to the conditions as well.
Is that not required to even be enforced?
Well, I think that, well, I think that the reason that I wanted to bring it as a condition for us is because it's enforceable by the state, but we don't have the authority to necessarily enforce that as the, as a city, because it's not our, I would, I would say. But if we have that as a condition, it's easier to enforce through code enforcement.
Question number one. Question number one.
Yeah, no, I read that, that they have to be licensed by the Shelby County Health Department, right? Yeah. I would also-
And all attached to ours shall be licensed by the state.
Yeah, yeah. And I guess maybe just amend that to say that we, that they abide by all the Tennessee Code for this type of establishment?
I think what they're trying to say is redundant. It's really, they have to have a license, they have to abide by state rules. These are heavily regulated businesses, and this really does not, doesn't add anything enforceable with otherwise. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Does it, does it not give us more of the enforcement?
I don't think so. Probably a question, but I don't think it would help at all.
Heard you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I don't think us adding any condition that the state would enforce is going to help us at all.
They have to abide by those conditions regardless. I mean, they would lose their license from the state if they didn't.
Yeah.
I don't know if it hurts to add it, but I don't know if it adds any teeth to anything.
I did have a question on that, if I may ask the chair, if I may ask a question.
Yes, please.
I was going to ask, could we, could we have hours of operation in there if we wanted to do that? Is that, or could we just say it's got to be body piercing or tattoos?
Yeah, I mean, you can make that a condition.
Okay.
It needs to be a reasonable condition, but you-
Right.
So they're not open till 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning or something.
And what would, I guess that's, the question is, what's reasonable?
I think that would be a, some input.
Sure. If you would allow us, you know, what would be reasonable?
Excuse me, what are your current hours in your Cordova?
So, the suites that we're renting out in the plaza, they don't have any specific regulations, so I've had tattoos that I personally done that have lasted 12 hours long, where, you know, somebody comes in from out of town to seek our work specifically, and I do have to complete the tattoo in one day. So I would prefer if I could have, you know, enough time earlier and after to prep and break down if need be for a 12 to 14-hour tattoo. So I would need, you know, I would need a sufficient amount of time to get my job done. However, I will say that, like, if, for instance, we were said to have closed at 3:00, 3:00 AM, I would shut anyone out who is not currently working, and I would just finish what I have to do to convenience my client. Outside of that, there would be no partying or, you know, sitting around, hanging out. That's not how we operate. Yeah, so walk, as far as walk-ins, walk-in traffic, we would shut the doors by a certain time regardless. So, and let's say, for instance, you were to say, well, you can operate until 10:00 PM, with the exception of everyone you're working on, we would no longer allow anyone to enter the door. We would lock it up, shut it down, and continue what we were doing.
What do you put on the window in your Cordova shop as far as average hours that you're open?
So we express individually to each client how, about how long they would be there, because if somebody was to, so we're appointment only, and I will say that. We're appointment only, so we don't express a specific timeframe. We just accept them at the time their appointment starts, and we set them free when they're done.
Based on what you're going to need to do for them?
Yes, and so we also, like, I have clients who come in as early as 9:00 AM. If I assume that they're going to be there about 12 hours, I can pretty much assure that I'll be out by 11:00 PM with setup and breakdown, if the tattoo were to last 12 hours, yes.
What's the average that you're dealing with for a tattoo? They're not all 12 hours, I wouldn't think.
No, they're not all, but for the sake of, you know, being sure that I'm respectful to, to whatever you guys are trying to impose, I just want to let you know the more extreme, more extreme time for taking tattoos. As far as, like, averages, there really isn't one. I mean, we have tattoos that last as little as two hours, and then we have tattoos that last as long as 12 hours. It really just depends on what everyone is getting.
Can you restate, at what time, at latest in the day, does your appointments, do your appointments start?
So where we are right now, currently 5:00 PM, that would be the latest that people come in for work. But we would just move it up earlier if we, you know, if you guys implied an ordinance where we were supposed to-
Well, I don't have an issue with, with that. Does anyone on the board want to make any recommendation to adjust that?
Well, here's my quick thought on it. You know, I understand that the business can be a late nighttime business. I would imagine that's the majority of the business there, and I can respect that. You know, right next door, you got a movie theater. I'm guessing probably midnight is probably about the latest the movie theater's getting out and going home. I hope I'm not overstating that. I don't, I'm assuming that's about right. Does, does a midnight closure of your business inhibit your business dramatically?
No, because, like I mentioned before, we are appointment only at the moment, so we wouldn't set for any appointments past that point.
Okay, I, I think if I heard you right, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you said appointments at 9:00 was about the latest you took.
If it were something that we would only be on for a couple of hours, yes.
Right, right, okay.
I hate to be really, you know-
Yeah, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to narrow you down. I understand the nature of the business can be, can vary quite a bit, but, you know, I'm sitting here trying to respect the, the businesses and the neighbors that are next to you and around you, and knowing fully well that, you know, a movie theater's open till, again, I'm thinking midnight, I haven't heard anybody tell me any different. Is midnight objectionable to you? I think that's a, I mean, it's pretty, it's getting pretty late for, you know, quote, Bartlett type thing, but at the same time, I don't want to inhibit your business and restrict you from, you know, from what you're entitled to as a business owner. Does, I mean, are you objecting to a, to a midnight closure?
No, not at all.
Okay, okay. Is it, other members feel acceptable with that? I mean, I'm just trying to think of the nature of the business, but at the same time, I'm trying to not keep them out there too late.
I agree, and I also think it would be to your advantage for our police department to know that there's not going to be people in there at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. If they see that, then there's an issue. So I think if there were a midnight, if it was determined you were going to close at midnight, that would work to everybody's advantage.
Okay, okay, unless I hear any objections, and it sounds like you're not arguing against it too much, I'd like to add that as a condition of a midnight closure.
I agree.
All right.
Javi, do you want to enter, enter the, also that they will only do tattooing and body piercing? Is the business only body piercing and tattoo?
Yeah, I'd be glad to offer that, but I, I think that, it sounds like that's the business they're in, and they're going to-
Yeah.
I think that was a good thought, though.
All right, so, any further discussion? Okay, so it appears we have at least the one amendment. I'll withdraw my amendment, or suggest that amendment, so, I only heard one, right? Okay. Any further discussion? Staff? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval with conditions and comments from staff, plus the suggestion of a 12 midnight closure.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All right, we got a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Casper Briggs?
Yes.
Jake Hoffman?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the list for discussion is the Little Bears Daycare Center. Kim, would you please introduce that?
Yes.
Thank you.
The applicant Kyle Ham with Will Banks Architecture and Associates is requesting approval of a revised site plan for the Little Bears Daycare. The subject property is located at 6975 Highway 70, and it is within the SC-1 Planned Unit Commercial Development Zoning District. The request before you tonight is for the approval of a bus garage or bus building addition over an existing asphalt parking lot where the buses are currently being parked. This will result in 10 open parking spaces being removed. However, the daycare is located on two lots that are adjacent to each other, and they have shared parking. Currently, there are 12 more parking spaces than what we require. With the addition of the bus garage, there will still be two more spaces than what is required. So they're required to have 38, so they'll, with the bus barn, they'll have 36 spaces. Access to the property will remain from Highway 70. Staff has reviewed the plans and the application and recommend approval with conditions, and I believe engineering would like to add an additional condition to their list with, that's already in the report.
We failed to add one condition. We need to assess the building along with the Fire Marshal's Office to make sure we have a fire hydrant within 400 feet of this, I'm going to call it the new building corner for this new building, so we just need to add that in as an engineering condition where we can assess that engineering department and the Fire Marshal's Office.
Thank you. Is there a representative for the owner that would like to come and speak? All right, please state your name and address for the record.
Kyle Ham, 5567 Commander Drive. We agree with all the conditions and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. What, why suddenly do we want a bus garage?
They're having problems with theft from parts off of their, their buses. I think it's happened multiple times, so they're just looking for some kind of enclosed area to park their buses to have them more secure.
Kyle, I just have a couple of questions. One is, since you're taking away the, the rear parking, and it looks like the hammer or the ability to back out, back out and turn around, do we see that that's going to be an issue now when you have parents drive in, up to the front of this new building?
Based on the pedestrian, average pedestrian vehicle, we did a turnaround, and we didn't see that it would be an issue for them to be able to get in there and turn around.
Okay, no issue, all right. And I guess, staff, you certainly list out how many parking spaces there were, but I guess they were not reflected in the drawings accurately. I didn't count as many as you guys did. I didn't count as many as you guys did. So I'm assuming that island there's, has parking around it? Is that true?
It's the two lots together.
Okay.
The automobile parking, they own both lots, the way they operate out of those lots.
Yes, so there, there's parking right here where the hand is, and in fact, the existing handicap parking is located right here.
All right. Thanks, and then just one other comment for the applicant is that now that you're putting a garage next to a daycare, there may be some additional requirements to have carbon monoxide sensors in the daycare, so it's something you might wanna take into consideration.
Yeah, definitely.
All right. Do we have any other discussion items?
I have a comment. Looking at your general notes on your sheets C-one and C-two, both notes number five need to be revised to say that they need to meet or exceed the requirements of the City of Bartlett, not the Town of Arlington.
All right, thank you, Curtis. Any other discussion items?
Here, you know, to make a motion to approve with comments and conditions from staff?
All right.
Second.
And to add the engineering condition for assessment by the Fire Marshal?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, so we have a motion in a second?
Casper Briggs.
Yes.
Jake Hoffman.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Curtis Siggler.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, motion passes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the proposed Bartlett sign ordinance. Kim, would you like to introduce that?
Yes. This is a city-initiated request to amend the sign ordinance and to have it reviewed in its entirety by the Planning Commission for a recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen for the approval of the amendment and the approval of our sign ordinance, which will include the amendment. Due to some recent changes in legislative laws, and as time moves along, rules change, we are having to amend our sign ordinance to meet the needs for the use of temporary signage, which includes political signage, construction signage, holiday decorations, real estate signage, handheld signage, directional signage, and provide regulations for flags and flag poles, et cetera. The amendments do not regulate the message, the amendments that we're proposing do not regulate the message, but it does regulate the size of location and provides time limitations for the temporary signage. We are also needing to amend our sign corridor section of the ordinance, which is currently located at US Highway Sixty-four and Germantown Road, about two thousand feet north of that intersection. And so what we're wanting to do is to add another section of the sign ordinance, a sign corridor, which would include Highway Sixty-four and Highway Seventy, two thousand feet north of that intersection along Highway Seventy. This will allow larger signage for properties that have frontages over a thousand feet or more or greater. Now, before the meeting, I had a brief conversation with Ed McKinney, and we talked about amending a little bit of the language in, it's the last paragraph of the amendment where it says for properties that are five acres or more, and we'd like to say for a cohesive, single development of five acres or more. With that being said, should you have any questions? Ed McKinney's here to answer, he's worked with us on this, and we hope that you recommend a favorable approval tonight to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Were there any discussion items?
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Can you give me the capsulized version of the amendment? What are we changing?
Um, all the things that I just listed. It's the temporary signage mainly, and then I listed what those temporary signs are, so it's all those things. And then it's also that last paragraph, which in the amendment section that you have for the special sign corridor, to add another section of the special sign corridor, which is Highway Seventy north of Sixty-four, where currently it's Highway Sixty-four, the north side of Germantown, two thousand feet from the intersection, and it will be the same linear distance for Sixty-four and Seventy as well.
Okay, thank you.
And also before, we didn't regulate flag poles, so we've added that to this, and handheld signs, which is also a temporary sign.
Any other discussion items? I just have one. I know we discussed a possible special sign district for Union Depot, I guess this fall under that category?
Uh, yes, that would be in that area.
Mm-hmm. But it, it doesn't necessarily address the specifics that they were asking for, I guess, does it?
They're not there yet. They're not applying for signage at this time.
All right.
We have currently that special sign corridor on Germantown Road. It allows twenty-foot tall signs, I mean, and those are properties that are five acres or greater. So this is in line with the same principle.
Okay.
Are the developers in our world gonna see this as just one more effort by the City of Bartlett to restrict business? I mean, we hear that all the time, that we're the toughest in the world. Until you push 'em, that's, well, they'll call you real tougher.
I think not, because right now, the developers of this world, they would not have that privilege, the same privilege as the car dealerships do on Highway Sixty-four. They would not have that same privilege on Highway Seventy. So we're actually opening the door for them.
Yeah, that, that's great. You know, that, we've got to be encouraging to get more folks to come here. And if we're opening the door and making it better for a developer that, you know, he can advertise, she can advertise that their property, then more power to them, more power to, to us, I believe.
Well, but this is, this isn't a new ordinance, though. I mean, this has just got some changes to the previous ordinance. It isn't like we're setting up a whole bunch of new rules. It sounds to me like we're loosening some of our rules, and that, what would you, Kim?
Well, I got, I got no problem with ordinances and, you know, rules. If somebody wants access to our sixty-two thousand people, they got to go by rules. I got no problem with that.
But look, but look at some of the signs on, on the south side of Sixty-four, and, that's what we're trying to prevent, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Kim.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Conroy?
I make a motion, I have some wording that our city attorney has asked that I put in the motion.
Go ahead.
Move that the Planning Commission approve the existing sign ordinance and the proposed amendments, and recommend that the Board of Mayor and Aldermen adopt the existing sign ordinance with the proposed amendments.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Casper Briggs.
Yes.
Jake Hoffman.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Curtis Siggler.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, that was the last item on the agenda. Any other discussion items? Seeing none, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.